Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first meeting in March. The meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, could you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Yes, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council meeting notice dated February 25th, 2021, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Mr. Naidoo?
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Barton?
President?
President Fox?
Here. And now, we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I have pledged allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
Yes. A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. This meeting is also being streamed live through YouTube. To view this meeting via YouTube, please visit the city website at cityofsummit.org and click on the YouTube icon at the top of the homepage. While this meeting is being broadcast live and members of the governing body are participating remotely, steps have been put in place to accommodate public input during this meeting through public notice dated February 25th, 2021, which provided information for those wishing to participate during public comment periods at this council meeting. The City Clerk's Office also provided through public notice instructions on how the public could submit a question or comment by email or regular first-class mail in advance of the meeting. Public comment will be permitted at specified times as outlined in the agenda. Please refrain from commenting until solicited by the council president. For those members of the public who wish to make a comment during a designated public comment period, please use the raise hand feature and you will be called upon by the council president. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. And lastly, we ask that all participants remain on mute unless called upon to speak. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of closed session on February 11th and the regular and closed session minutes from February 17?
So moved. Second?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay. Right, for the 17th, but not for the 11th, correct? Councilmember Little abstain from the 17th, but not from the 11th, right?
I've checked the dates, but for the minutes from the last meeting, I was not present.
Right, okay. And then, Councilmember Allen, you were at the regular meeting, but not the two closed sessions, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so your, what is your vote then on that one? Are you for the 17th?
Yes.
And abstain on the other two?
Abstain on the other two, yep.
All right. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, sorry, I forgot we already voted. I got caught up on that. Okay, so we're moving on now to reports. Madam Mayor, it's your report first.
Thank you, Council President. I just have a few remarks or reports tonight. First of all, the Summit Police Department is seeking applicants for the position of school crossing guard. There are multiple openings for the position, and more school crossing guards are urgently needed. This is a paid position that greatly benefits our community. Applications are available on the city website at cityofsummit.org. Members of the public may make overnight on-street parking requests from the Summit Police Department online at cityofsummit.org/polic. In the past, you had to call the dispatch office and request to have overnight parking, but now you can do it online. On Sunday, March 14th, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., the City of Summit, the Westfield Regional Health Department, and Atlantic Health are joining together to sponsor a COVID-19 vaccine information session to educate the community on the benefits of getting vaccinated and to provide registration process. Medical professionals and health officials will be available to answer questions in English and Spanish, and Spanish-speaking volunteers will help with the registration process. We are also hoping to have a few members of the community who will volunteer and who can enter in. The event is being held at the Summit Community Center at 100 Morris Avenue. Please share this information with your friends and neighbors. More available, more information is available on the city website at cityofsummit.org. And lastly, at the end of February, Governor Murphy signed a bill decriminalizing marijuana for people aged 21 and older in the state of New Jersey. There is one very alarming aspect of the legislation relating to minor dependents aged 17 and younger, and when parents can be notified by the police about violations. It is a source of concern for our police department and police departments throughout the state and to families. Chief Andrew Bartolotti has prepared a statement that he can share next. If you are concerned like I am, please consider contacting our state senate representatives and assembly persons now. If we join together, perhaps our concerns about aspects of this new law will be heard. Chief Bartolotti, would you like to read your statement, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. New Jersey State Legislature drafted three bills that Governor Murphy signed into law on February 21st, 2021, to legalize, regulate, and decriminalize marijuana. Although marijuana is decriminalized, it is still a violation under New Jersey Statute 2C-33-15 for a person under the age of 21 to possess and consume marijuana or alcohol. The legislation indicates that any juvenile under the age of 17 who is found to be under the influence or possession of marijuana, hashish, cannabis, or alcohol must be given a written warning. For a first offense, officers shall issue a written warning and are prohibited from notifying the parents or guardian. It is only after a second subsequent offense that parents or guardians are notified. The Summit Police Department is concerned with the application of this portion of the law, as it impacts the rights of parents to have knowledge of the behavior of a dependent child that may affect their well-being. While this new law limits our ability to contact parents for a first occurrence, the commitment of the Summit Police Department to the health and safety of our people, our young people in our community, is unwavering. While following our duty to enforce the law, our officers will continue to support and encourage young people and their families to avoid drugs and alcohol and provide education, mental health, and addiction, excuse me, provide education on mental health and addiction issues. We value the strong relations that spill throughout our community policing and from our work within the school district. While we understand that many parents are concerned with this portion of the new legislation, please know that the Summit Police Department's priority to protect and serve has not changed. Anyone wishing to seek more information on this new legislation can do so by going to the Office of Attorney General's website at njoag.gov/marijuana. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Chief.
Madam Mayor, did you have anything else, or that's it for your report?
That's it for my report. Thank you very much, Madam President.
And now on to Michael Rogers for the city administrator's report.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Beginning on or about Wednesday, March 3rd, that would be tomorrow, until approximately Wednesday, March 24th, JCPN L will be performing routine inspections of transmission lines in the Summit area, weather permitting. Two helicopters will be used for the inspections, including a black and silver Hughes MD-500 and a blue Bel-Jet Ranger. Please contact JCPNL at 908-608-5000 with any questions. Curbside leaf collection begins on Monday, April 5th, and will continue through Friday, April 23rd. Leaves may be placed in, placed at the curb in brown paper composting bags on your regular household garbage collection day. Please do not include twigs or branches. For more information, please visit the cityofsummit.org or city website. And finally, effective on Monday, March 8th, and until City Hall fully reopens to the public, the Department of Community Services will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Monday to Friday, for all essential in-person business. After 3:00 p.m., paperwork, not payments, may be left in a drop box in the lobby adjacent to the Summit Police Department. And that's all I have for this evening. Council President, thank you.
Thank you. Council President's report. If you are a Summit resident aged 65 or older, you can contact Silver Summit at 908-605-0014 to be paired with a volunteer to help you through the vaccination signup process. If you are senior resident who needs transportation to a vaccination appointment, call the senior helpline at SHIELD at 908-605-0014 or email silversummitnewjersey, I'm sorry, silversummitnj@gmail.com to schedule a ride. The Silver Summit Senior Citizens Advisory Committee is seeking volunteers aged 18 and older to join its project subcommittee focused on developing resources and services for seniors in Summit. Volunteer applications available at cityofsummit.org, and you can email silversummitnj@gmail.com for more information. Finally, please join me on Monday, April 26th, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. for a Zoom talk with conservationist Doug Talamy. The talk is titled "Nature's Best Hope", and it's based on a book written by Mr. Talamy. It explores how conservation can begin in our own backyards and how a few simple steps will help to reverse declining biodiversity all around us. The talk is geared to gardeners of all levels, and there will be an opportunity to ask questions after the presentation. This talk is sponsored by the Summit Environmental Commission, the Summit Area Green Faith Circle, Summit Interfaith Council, Summit Library, PSCNG Foundation, and Sustainable Jersey. For more information or to register, go to summitslibrary.org. And now we're moving on to our ceremonial awards, and I will turn it over to our mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam President. So, everyone, as you may know, two years ago, we established an award in Summit for volunteers who have given a great deal to our community. The first award was to Mr. Tom O'Rourke, who has left us. And last year's recipients were Beth Lovejoy and Mary and Glenn. You've heard me say many times that Summit's best asset is its volunteers. We have hundreds and hundreds of people who volunteer, who work this city, who make it the great community that it is. This year's recipient of the Volunteer Award is a longtime resident of Summit and beloved by many residents. I think of the Reverend Dr. Dennison D. Harriel as the conscience of our community. I would like to share a bit of his biography and his contributions to Summit. I am not going to be able to include everything because we would be here for hours. Reverend Harriel was born in Leesville, Louisiana, near Fort Polk, the U.S. Army post, where his father was stationed and where his mother was an elementary school teacher. He attended school in Columbus, Georgia, Leesville, Louisiana, and Trenton, New Jersey. After graduating from Trenton Central High School, he received an academic scholarship to Howard University. He attended graduate school at Brooklyn College and is a graduate of the New York Theological Seminary. He received the Doctor of Divinity degree from Livingston College in Salisbury, North Carolina. On October 1st, 1989, Reverend Harriel was appointed pastor of Wallace Chapel AME Zion Church in Summit. Shortly after being appointed as pastor of Wallace Chapel, he began the process of getting the church designated as a New Jersey and a national historic site in recognition of the outstanding accomplishments of the second pastor of the church, Reverend Dr. Florence S. Randolph, who served from 1925 to 1946. His vision became a reality in 2007, and you can see the marker in front of the church on Broad Street. Reverend Harriel has served our community for decades. He is a former commissioner of the Summit Housing Authority, former trustee of Sage Elder Care, former vice president of the Tri-City NAACP, member of the Board of Directors, and former president of the New Jersey Council of Churches, former member of the Overlook Hospital Chaplaincy Service Board, former Summit Police Department chaplain, former president of the Summit Interfaith Council, former member of SHIP, Summit Helping Its People, the Homeless Ministry, former member of Morris Habitat for Humanity Board of Directors, former trustee of the Interweave Center for Holistic Living and Rotarian. He presently serves as a member of the Mayor's Diversity Forum, the Summit Affordable Housing Committee, the Atlantic Healthcare Multi-Faith Council, Shaping Summit Together, the Summit Interfaith Council, Overlook Medical Center Palliative Care Advisory Board, and Summit African-American Action Association, S4A. In 2004, Reverend Harriel wrote a letter to the Summit Superintendent of Schools requesting that the Summit Middle School be named after Lawton C. Johnson, the organist at Wallace Chapel, and the office manager at the middle school for 50 years. The school is now known as the Lawton C. Johnson Summit Middle School. Reverend Harriel has received awards and recognition for his faith, charity, and church and community leadership and involvement from many, many organizations. Council members and I are delighted to add this award to all of his other awards. Pastor Harriel is married to Ernestine Tina Harriel, and they are the parents of Sharon and Eric, grandparents of Kendall and Crystal, and great-grandparents of Tristan. In seeking to improve the quality of life for all people, he operates from this basic philosophy. One, is there a need? Two, is it doable? And three, is it the right thing to do? Then, just get it done. He often says, "You may not change the world, but you can brighten the corner where you are." Reverend Harriel, I am so pleased and honored to be able to present this award to you. I am deeply sad that we are not doing it in person. And at the very first council meeting, where we're all back together in council chambers, I implore you to come so that I can give you a big hug. You have been an amazing leader in our community. Many things would not have happened without you. And I personally know that when you see a need, you're relentless in making sure that people understand the importance of recognizing the need and finding a solution for that need. So, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. I know many people rely upon you, your wisdom, your good counsel. I certainly do. And I know that every member of council joins me in congratulating you. And I'd like to show everyone, I'm going to read the certificate, and I'll bring it to your home tomorrow, Reverend. It says, "City of Summit 2021 Volunteer of the Year awarded to Reverend Dr. Dennison D. Harriel Jr. in recognition of your outstanding contribution as a dedicated community leader and visionary, in appreciation of your countless hours of community involvement, and for being a shining example of volunteerism in our community. Presented on March 2nd, 2021, at the Summit Common Council Meeting, and it is signed by our council president, Marjorie Fox, and by me." So, thank you and congratulations. And if you'd like to say anything, please, please do.
Perhaps we can have a standing ovation.
There we go. I think it's a... If we were in person, we would certainly have one.
Exactly. So, Reverend Harriel, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Oh, yes.
Let me begin by thanking God for the precious gift of life, the gifts and the opportunity that He has given me to serve. Thank you, Mayor Rades, for your kind and heartfelt words, and for you and the members of Common Council for recognizing and giving me this significant award on behalf of the City of Summit. I realize that I stand with so many other volunteers, past and present, who have and continue to volunteer in serving to help improve conditions and enhance the quality of life in Summit for all its residents. Having been born and raised in the small segregated town of Leesville, Louisiana, at that time, the population was about 2,800 people, to living in various parts of the United States and abroad, and now, in Summit, makes receiving this award very, very, very special to me. There are so many people who have poured into my life that helped to make my receiving this award possible. First, let me thank my parents, my family, especially my wife for her love, sacrifice, encouragement, and support, my daughter, son, grandson, granddaughter, and my special eight-year-old great-grandson, my two sisters and my brother, my former bishops and my present bishop, Bishop Dennis Vernon Proctar, for appointing me as pastor of Wallace Chapel AME Zion Church, my presiding elder, Reverend Dr. Douglas L. Maven, my Wallace Chapel Church family for their love, cooperation, and support, the Jersey City District and the New Jersey Conference of the AME Zion Church, the Summit Interfaith Council, others that I have and continue to serve with in various organizations, boards, and committees, and friends who encourage me. One of my favorite hymns is "A Choice to Keep I Have", that was written by Charles Wesley, the brother of John Wesley, who was the founder of the Methodist Church. I would like to close with the words of the second verse of this hymn that continues to inspire and motivate me to volunteer and to serve. "To serve the present age, my calling to fulfill, oh, may it all my powers engage to do my master's will." Thank you again, Mayor Rades, and thank you, members of Common Council, for this recognition and this meaningful award. My heart is overflowing with joy. I'm still on the battlefield, and I'm continuing to try and brighten the corner where I am. Thank you so very much. God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. You've, because of all that you've done in this community, you've made this community a brighter place. So, we appreciate, from the bottoms of our hearts, everything that you do and continue to do for this community. And we look forward to working with you for many, many years to come. So...
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, with that, I think we will move on to public comment, I think, unless anyone else has anything they'd like to say. Okay, so we're going to move on to our public comment. And at this point, we are going to take comments from the public about any issues that are not topics on tonight's business agenda. Whenever an audience or member reads from a parent's statement, please provide a copy to the city clerk at arlicates@cityofsummit.org. And when you are called upon to speak, please state your name and your address. And I ask you to limit your comments to three minutes, in length. So, you have any comments? Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Gross.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yay, terrific, terrific. Good evening. Paul and Jen Gross, 41 Sweetbrier Summit High School parents, and we speak on behalf of SUPER, with two R's, Summit Parents for Extracurricular Return to Routine. Our group includes and represents a broad cross-section of Summit students and parents. Our mission is to do everything we can to ensure Summit High School students enjoy the once-in-a-lifetime moments that will soon be behind them. Most have only one shot at playing in the spring concert or in the big game. They have only one senior year. With the COVID situation trending towards normal, we are extremely hopeful that the worst is behind us and this topic soon irrelevant. However, we can make no assumptions. We ask for your assistance to ensure Summit does a better job in the future if we are confronted with challenges again. To be very clear, we are not here to critique those in the school who enforce decisions. We are here to ask council to govern those who make the decisions that impact our kids. Allow us to share four points for council's consideration. Other towns and districts have carried on when Summit District did not. In October, our district ceased fall activities and sports, then chose not to return. New Prov and GovLive played their annual Thanksgiving game after GovLive had 297 students and 68 staff quarantined, and the school closed for 14 days. With 365 students and staff exposed weeks prior, they found a way, though in a risk situation far worse than Summit's. Summit students lost lifetime memories when other towns found ways to still create them. Summit does have a choice. We were told, I was told in November, that the COVID danger in the town of Summit mandated that we accept Board of Health guidance without question. The three other high schools in Summit, who are in the same town, in the same county, compete in the same athletic conference, and often share the same fields and facilities, and are under the same jurisdiction of the Board of Health, all continued on through their fall seasons, whilst Summit shut down and chose not to open activities back 14 days later. The third point, the decision process, insight and oversight. Our understanding is that Summit, and possibly a council predating this group, delegated certain authority to health officials outside of Summit, who today are the ones who issue recommendations back to Summit. If our children are to be impacted by guidance from a non-Summit, unelected expert or agency, we in Summit deserve both insight and oversight. And the final point, there are real risks and costs associated with shutdowns. Children are at greater risk of harm from harsh restrictions than they are from COVID-19 itself. That is something we understand now in 2021. SUPER has conducted exhaustive research. We've studied credible data, and we would be happy to share that with council. In conclusion, our children need and deserve normalcy, and they should not live each day in fear of normalcy being taken from them once again. We have one ask. Can council appoint a member to study and represent us and our children on this critical issue? Thank you for considering our request for help.
Thank you, Mr. Gross, for your comment. As a parent, you know, I empathize, I share your frustrations. I have a high school senior who's missing out on a lot of firsts and lasts. So, I get that. And I think many on the dais also are in a similar situation and feel similarly. Nonetheless, we do not have authority over the decision-making about schools opening or what activities happen. That is an issue for the Board of Education. In answer to your question about the health official, we have a regional health office, which is a shared service with several other towns. So, it's not a person outside of Summit that we've delegated to. What we have done is worked with Westfield and several other communities to share a health officer, and that is the person who makes the recommendation. She's the expert who makes the recommendations to the Board of Education. I don't know that there is any precedent for us to have a person that is a liaison to the Board of Education for this purpose. We do have, I believe, Councilmember Hairston is our council liaison to the Board of Education. But, you know, really, this is an issue that I believe should be addressed between the parents and the Board of Education. And I don't see a role for us in the middle of that. If the mayor is obviously more involved in the Board of Education part of things, so if she has anything further to add, I will throw it to her.
Thank you, Council President. No, I don't have, you have said exactly what I would have said had I been first. And so, I think, you know, the Board of Education is governed by the state, and our role is not interactive, and we have no authority over decisions made by the Board of Education. They inform us. We do not govern them.
Okay.
If I may make one final comment, we have been studying this for several... We, if I may make one final comment, we have been studying this for several months back to November. Um, we have taken various approaches. And first of all, we think that this is, this is a broader community issue. Things that happened for Summit High School trickle down to Summit Clubs, to Summit Activities. It impacts literally thousands of children in this community. So we do think that it is a broader issue than just the Board of Education. And secondly, there, I'll go back to my point. The Board of Education is taking literal guidance from a Board of Health authority, and we understand that that authority once sat in Summit, now sits in Westfield and has the control of God over my child and your children. And we're not asking, I'm not asking to solve it now. All we're asking for is a dialogue and for someone to consider looking into it. I don't think we're going to solve it tonight, but we're just asking for um consideration of this being a broader issue. And we plan, we plan to speak to the board. Um, we've had conversations with the superintendent and others. And we're told repeatedly that it's outside of Summit's control. It's outside of the board's control. It's in the hands of this person in Westfield who, if we as Summit gave or delegated authority to that person, we're just looking for answers. We've been stonewalled for three months. So with that, I'll respectfully give it back and go on mute. Thank you very much for hearing us.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Um, Mayor, did you have, were you?
I I just wanted to say that, you know, municipalities all over the state are encouraged all the time to engage in shared services to to save taxpayers' dollars. And that's what this is. It's not that we've, we didn't need seven or eight different health departments. We have one health department and the health official from the Westfield Regional Health Department, it just happens to be in Westfield, but it serves eight municipalities, I believe. Um, she takes her guidance from the CDC and from the state. So she's not making this stuff up. Um, and and so that's that's and and other boards of education, they can decide things differently, I suppose. I don't know. But um, that's that's the way it works in Summit. It's not an outside person who's.
I mean, I I can go into details. The the guidance is coming down and Summit District is accepting guidance.
Sir, sir, this is not a back and forth. You've had your your time to comment, so please refrain.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Let me just explain, I mean, I I want to say something, I I just want to explain for the general public. It's not that the local Board of Health Officer that we have a shared service with agreement with makes the ultimate call. Folks have to understand that in the context of schools, it's the Commissioner of Health at the state level in consultation with the State Department of Education, in consultation with the various governor executive orders, which I think are now up to 180, that deal with uh schools, operations, uh involving sports, it's the NJ SIA, it's a very complex issue. And one size doesn't fit all. And and let me explain to you. I have districts that I represent that have very small class sizes. The one thing that you have to have is social distancing or physical barriers between students if you can't maintain the six feet of social distancing. So it's a very complex thing and every every uh municipality has different transmission rates, et cetera. So the deport, the local Board of Health that we utilize, they're in consultation on a daily basis with the State Department of Health uh getting guidance. It's not just one person making random calls. It's it's a it's a fairly complex issue, but you're ultimately guided. Districts are guided by the State DOE, the State Department of Health, the Governor's Office, and in consultation with a local health officer who's helping to give guidance on what those rulings are meaning.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jacoby. Um, moving on, Gillian Heimple, go ahead, Ms. Heimple.
Thank you, council members and Mayor Rades. My name is Gillian Heimple, H E I M P L E, and I live at 17 Glen Oaks Avenue Summit. I am a 16-year-old junior at the Summit High School and a student representative on the Recycling Advisory Committee. I'd like to use my time today to talk about zero waste. Zero waste is a goal of creating no waste, and that includes a plan of action where all discarded materials become resources for others to use. Reaching that ambitious goal would require change on many levels and would include participation by individuals, businesses, manufacturers and municipalities. In February of 2020, the City of Summit was well represented, was well represented at a zero-waste planning charrette held in Maplewood. The workshop provided an introduction to zero waste and relevant case studies were presented. Neighboring communities shared experiences and ideas, and I appreciate that our leadership and community members participated in the event. The pandemic then hit in March and waste has since increased for a variety of reasons. While we all should be understanding of each other and the choices we have had to make during the pandemic, there are still steps that we can take as individuals to reduce the amount of waste that we generate. Some studies show that the average American produces over four pounds of trash every day, and many of us are no exception to that. Basic ways to reduce waste, including using reusable bags, buying food with less plastic and packaging, using reusable containers and bottles, and meal planning to reduce food waste. Perhaps we can go further and create personal zero-waste initiatives and incorporate additional changes. These changes can be slow and steady, a pace of change that is manageable even during a pandemic. I'll close with a reminder that we should all continue to recycle right. All recycling should be clean and dry, and in Summit, only plastics numbered one, two and five are accepted. As for recycling curbside and at the transfer station, remember there is zero tolerance for some items, zero plastic bags, zero food and liquid, zero shredded paper, and zero tanglers such as hoses, wires, ropes and cords. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heimple, and thank you for being an example. I know that you've um you've pursued a zero-waste lifestyle and I'm endlessly impressed with your efforts to do so. And I hope that um that you'll continue to come to council meetings and tell us about these efforts. And once the pandemic is over, I would love to have you come and do a presentation and talk more about this at a council meeting. So thank you for your comments. Um, moving on, are there any other comments from members of the public?
Council President.
Yes.
We've we uh this council received several emails uh yesterday uh for public comment this evening, if I may read them.
Please.
To the record, okay. Um, they all have to do with um supporting the ban on gas leaf blowers. Uh, the first email is from David Oful of 58 Parmley Place, 50 Parmley Place, excuse me, uh saying, "I will not be attending the March 16th meeting, but I wanted to voice my support for a gas leaf blower policy like Montclair." Uh, the second email from Ted Tolles and Ruth Tolles of 30 Hawthorne Place. And they write, "We use a gas leaf blower on our property from time to time, yet we strongly support a ban on the blowers from June to September, even though it will impact our own activity. The number of homes that retain a yard service has grown to such an extent that the leaf blower sound is never far from our ears nor the fumes from our lungs. We support a test period ban and an identification of yard services that use other means of collection." Uh, the next one is from Nora and Mark Miller Muller of 74 Valley View Avenue. Uh, "Dear Summit community leaders, I'm writing in support of the gas leaf blower restrictions. I believe that the transition from gas to electric-powered machinery is logical, environmentally responsible, and a reasonable ask of businesses. Please act to make this happen in Summit." Uh, we have two more. Uh, the next one is from Dave and Colleen McCaffrey. "We are so excited that the city is contemplating a ban of the gas leaf blowers. As 20-plus-year residents, we've noticed that the noise from these machines has only gotten worse as the machines have become more powerful and fewer people rake. And this doesn't even begin to speak to the fossil fuel effects. Totally in favor of electric units, count us in." And the last one from Amy Schaefer, Summit resident. "I am writing to support the proposal to ban gas leaf blowers in Summit." Thank you. And that's the last one, Council President.
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. And um, so we have an ad hoc council committee on leaf blowers that's been working on this. And um, that's chaired by Council Member Little, so I'm going to hand it over to her to um address these comments.
Yes, I I want to thank everyone who wrote in. Um, as we discussed last spring and summer, we had a number of residents who also um came to council meetings or wrote emails expressing concern about the noise um with leaf blowers and and the environmental effects and some of the other concerns with gas leaf blowers. Um, over the fall, we formed an ad hoc committee that has a number of um residents, as well as landscape companies, um a few council members, and we've been looking at this issue. One of the residents, Helene Holst, has also been working with a regional consortium that's looking, um multiple towns looking at um different um solutions to gas leaf blowers. And so um right now, we are, we are looking at the possibility of doing a pilot program that would ban the leaf blowers over, you know, the summer period just to try it out. So we will hopefully be um talking about that more in the future. But I want to thank all the residents in the the landscape representatives who've been working on this in the fall and looking for solutions. But thank you so much for writing in, um and we are definitely exploring some possible solutions.
Thank you, Council Member Little. Um, does anyone have anything else to add from council? Okay, um, so if not, are there any other members of the public who would like to comment? Um, all right, I don't see any hands. So um with that, that will close the um public comment period and move on to ordinances for introduction. So uh, Madam Clerk, could you leave the first ordinance, please?
Yes. An ordinance of the City of Summit County of Union, New Jersey, adopting new stormwater management regulations pursuant to NJAC 7:8 and repealing and replacing replacing section 26-1 Storm Water Management of Chapter 26 Storm Water Management Regulations of the revised general ordinances of the City of Summit.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Council Member Little, would you like to introduce this ordinance? I think you're muted, Council Member Little.
Thank you, Council President. Just give me one moment. When I tried to unmute, I lost the ordinance. The joys of technology.
Mm-hmm.
Here we are. Um, uh, section 26.1 of the city's revised general ordinance does pertain to the state-mandated stormwater management rules for major developments within the city. These amendments um to New Jersey stormwater management rules went into effect in 2020, and every municipality is now required to revise their specific ordinances um this month in March of 2021. So these new regulations require and allow the use of green infrastructure to mimic the natural cycle of water, to capture, filter, absorb and reuse by engineers when preparing development plans, among other changes. Um, I will note that um as part of our recent um DRO revisions, the city had also already included similar language for minor developments. Um, so this will just bring our um ordinances into line with the state regulations and are consistent with the um the changes that we had already made to minor uh developments. So I um asked that we introduce this ordinance for hearing. Or we do this ordinance for introduction.
So I seconded.
Okay, um, Madam Clerk, could we please have a roll call?
Yes. Ms. Allen?
Hi.
Ms. Hairston?
Hi.
Ms. Little?
Hi.
Mr. Naidu?
Hi.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Hi.
Mr. Barton?
Hi.
President Fox?
Hi. Motion carries, and we'll have the hearing on the 16th of March on this ordinance. Uh, so now moving on to resolution. Um, Council Member Barton, our first resolution is um finance resolution.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, this resolution is number 7705. It authorizes emergency temporary appropriations to the current fund budget, which is the temporary budget that is used until the final adoption of the 2021 budget. The change is in the amount of $180,400. Uh, this brings the temporary municipal operating budget that was previously $10,982,378 up to $11,162,778. For those following very closely, this is $30,000 more than is listed in the packet that was available last week to the public. Uh, this is because as part of the Broad Street well uh Broad Street West redevelopment, we are executing a letter of intent with the post office uh which required 30,000 additional dollars. This payment will be reimbursed from the developer's escrow account immediately, but needed to be added to the temporary operating budget. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, um, so I, uh, we need a roll call. Oh, wait, did you have, was there any? I think I saw it on. Nope, okay, we're ready for a roll call, Madam Clerk.
All ready. Uh, Ms. Allen?
Hi.
Ms. Hairston?
Hi.
Ms. Little?
Hi.
Mr. Naidu?
Hi.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Hi.
Mr. Barton?
Hi.
President Fox?
Hi. The motion carries, moving on to finance number two. Council Member Barton?
Thank you, Council President. This is resolution number 7704. This resolution authorizes a transfer of appropriations within the 2020 operating budget from operating accounts with a surplus to those with insufficient funds. The amount of this transfer is $17,000, and this is different from what we just did because this is an adjustment based on spending from the 2020 operating budget, whereas the last resolution addressed the temporary operating budget for this year. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, seeing none, um, we, Madam Clerk, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Allen?
Hi.
Ms. Hairston?
Hi.
Ms. Little?
Hi.
Mr. Naidu?
Hi.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Hi.
Mr. Barton?
Hi.
President Fox?
Hi.
Okay, motion carries, moving on to finance number three. Council Member Barton.
Thank you, Council President. This is resolution number 7714. This resolution authorizes a one-year contract extension with Millennium Strategies LLC for grant-writing services. This contract is not to exceed $42,000. As a council, we are now entering the second consecutive, very challenging budget year. Every dollar we spend must be thoroughly scrutinized. And for that reason, we have had a lot of deliberation behind the scenes about whether it is worthwhile to continue this professional relationship. In my own thinking about the value, it has not been helpful to think about in terms of how much grant money was brought in last year, as we will always want more grant money. And from a practical standpoint, 2020 was not a good representation of anything. Uh, it was, it is not helpful to think about it in terms of how much potential grant money has been applied for and could still come in, because even our best guess is just that. I think the best way to assess the value added is that at the end of the day, submitting grant applications is extremely time-consuming. If we did not have a professional grant-writing service, these very thorough applications would fall to the department heads. And as I've said numerous times since the arrival of the pandemic, they have pivoted brilliantly to meet the needs of the day. This is not the time to saddle them with more work. So if this resolution passes, we will be making it very clear to Millennium that we have some very specific requests for this year. We're going to make sure Millennium engages with with each of the council committees, and that includes the council members, to ascertain not just our needs for the year, but also our aspirational projects, things that probably could not be funded if not for grant money. We're going to make sure Millennium engages with our city boards and commissions. There are literally hundreds of amazing volunteers with ideas for how to make this a better place, and often the only thing between those ideas and making them a reality is money. In addition to the usual or routine grant applications, we're going to be asking Millennium to get very creative in identifying new sources of funds from the public and the private sector. And finally, Millennium will create a strategic plan, and the finance committee will review it and discuss the status of grant applications regularly. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Council Member Naidu?
Thank you, Council President. I know that, and I thank the finance committee for thinking through the issues associated with this. It is a an issue that's come up in previous years about whether or not we should go ahead and continue to fund having an outside. Uh, I appreciate. appreciate the fact of 2020 being an unusual year. I also appreciate the fact of 2021 also being a challenging year for our staff and the need to have outside help. But Councilman Vartan raises an important point about the interaction between Millennium and council members and boards. But we should also make sure that we prioritize, there's not an endless bandwidth that they would have, and we need to make sure we prioritize those projects and initiatives. There are some that that really can look as promising, hopefully, for grant money. And this is, and this is very critical for folks to understand. A lot of this stuff, and and the mayor previously said this, this town is really, a lot of it is done by volunteers, and volunteers come up with some really great ideas. But we don't have an endless budget, and and we cannot fund everything. And this is where, used properly, our grant writers can help to bridge that gap. But it's incumbent upon us to bring them good projects, and it's incumbent upon them to then work their tails off to try to find us money for them. So hopefully, a collaborative process this year will will begin. With that, I'll be in favor of this.
Thank you, Council Member Naidoo. Any other comments? Oh, Council Member Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank Council Member Vartan and Council Member O'Sullivan for really scrutinizing this contract and working closely with our Administrator Rogers. And I can only echo what Councilman Vartan said about the importance of our being good stewards of the taxpayers' money and taking advantage of every dollar that is made available to us through federal and county grants. And I have to, after having personally looked at the application from FEMA and seeing what amazing job our Ms. Baldwin did on that process, I know she needs a good partner with Millennium. So I am really pleased that we are raising the bar and being very intentional about being proactive to getting all of the dollars that are made available to communities. And I'm amazed when I hear how much other communities are taking advantage of them and and want to echo the thank you to the fire chief, the police chief, Aaron Schreger, who's going to be doing more of that as well. This is the time when we really need it. And so I commit, along with the other council members, to do my job to make sure we're engaging effectively with them, because it's just, it couldn't be a better time, a more critical time for us needing these additional dollars. So I fully support our giving them another year to show what what they can do.
Thank you, Council Member Hairston. Any other comments from members of council? Okay, are there any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So now we're moving on to to law and labor. Council Member Allen.
Thank you, Council President. Pursuant to our discussion in closed session, I'm introducing Resolution 7698 to authorize the extension of paid sick leave for an employee in the Department of Community Services. The extension will be through April 21, 2021, and we wish this employee a quick and easy recovery. I move this resolution for adoption.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, we've got a few resolutions from Safety and Health. Council Member Hairston, would you like to start with Safety and Health Number One?
Yes. Thank you, Council President. I'm moving Resolution Number 7688 to appoint the humane law enforcement officer. And this resolution is to ensure compliance with the New Jersey annual cruelty law enforcement statute. A resolution is to appoint our Sergeant Michael Triber to the position for the City of Summit and to remain appointed until such time that a successor is named. So I move this resolution for approval.
Okay, any comments from members of council? Any comments? It looks like we have a comment from a member of the public, Mr. Miniker. Go ahead.
Hi, thanks very much. Good evening. The appointment of a new humane law enforcement officer is a really good occasion to mention that although this officer's primary HLEO duties are the investigation of animal neglect and abuse, that HLEO officer is likely the go-to officer for animal-related complaints and incidents in general. One of those animal-related incidents, it's not common, but it's definitely a potentially devastating one for the person involved, is the interference with a guide dog or a seeing eye dog. I want to encourage Summit Council and Summit Police to review Dusty's law and potentially make mandatory training on such a law for that officer. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Miniker, can you just state your your address for the clerk, please?
Yes, 15 Edgar Street.
Great. Thank you so much for your comment. And moving, okay, so are there any other comments or questions from members of the public? Anything else from members of council? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Safety and Health Number Two. Council Member Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. I'm moving Resolution Number 7707, which is to authorize the submission of the New Jersey Division of Highway Traffic Safety for the Distracted Driving statewide crackdown grant application. And similar to what we just heard Council Member Vartan talk about, the, this resolution is asking for a permission for the Police Department to apply for a $9,000 grant funding through this new, this year's New Jersey distracted driving statewide crackdown. As such, the Police Department will be applying for the full $9,000 to conduct overtime enforcement details during the designated project period, which will be the, and the application deadline is March 12, 2021. And the funding for this program will be applied toward the reimbursement of police overtime, and there is no match required for this grant program. So I move this for approval.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So Council Member Hairston, the last Safety and Health Resolution.
Thank you, Council President. And the last safety resolution is Number 7697 to declare a vacancy for the police officer position. And this is being requested as the result of an impending retirement of Officer Raymond Peterson, whose last day of employment will be May 31. And Officer Peterson, who has served the city with distinction for more than 25 years, and we are grateful for his service. And at this time, I'm hoping the public saw, it has been widely advertised through various means to hire an experienced police officer. And and so we need to have this resolution approved so that this vacancy can be hired. I move the resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. So we're now moving on to the consent agenda. And usually, we take the agenda and vote on it as a whole unless members of council or members of the public have anything specific they want to discuss on any of these resolutions. So if you do speak now, otherwise, I'll ask for a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So now we're moving on to council members' comments and new business. Are there any? Council Member Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. March is Women's History Month, and I just thought it would be important for us to pause for a moment to take note of the historic nature of this council. City Clerk Rosie Licatise made me aware, for the first time, Summit is now represented on council by a majority of women. Mayor Rades, Council President Fox, and Council Members Little, Hairston, and Allen, it's an honor to serve alongside you, and I'm thankful for all you do for the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Member Vartan. I hadn't actually counted it up, but it's it's good news. So any other comments from members of council? Council Member Naidoo?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to mention an event that's going to happen. And in fairness, I will say that it's with regard to the Great Swamp Watershed Association, which I am a member of the board of. But the Great Swamp Watershed Association, along with Rutgers Cooperative, as well as our own Environmental Commission, there's going to be on March 25 from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., an introduction to rain gardens. And why this is important is, as as we heard tonight, there are changes in the stormwater management, and among the ways of managing stormwater is to install rain gardens. And so this intro's rain gardens is a Zoom call at 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then after that, you can sign up for a 30-minute consultation on April 8 with a Rutgers engineer who will help to design a plan for your specific rain garden. But you need to first go to the Zoom call on March 25. So if folks want more information, go to great swamp.org. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Member Naidoo. Any other comments from, yes, Council Member Hairston.
Thank you, Council President Fox. I want to take the opportunity to really thank the mayor for the efforts that she, along with the Atlantic or Overlook Hospital, in organizing this community event to be educated about COVID. I cannot emphasize enough how important this is. We are having such extreme reactions now, listening to the caller who called in about rushing, wanting to make sure kids were back to school and back to sports. And we know that there are folks who are scrambling to get the vaccination, and that's a complicated process that many people have tried to make manageable here in Summit, and it's a hard job. But the education part of it is so important because we cannot allow people to let their guard down and let all of this hard work be for nothing. We need to stay educated about it because there are many people who are afraid. I know council members must be similar to me, getting emails asking for us not to require the vaccine. And there are, you know, misinformation. And it is so important for us to encourage folks to continue to stay vigilant, even when they get the vaccine, to wear the mask and and practice social distancing. And the supply is coming through. We are going to be opening up soon. And but we have to do it properly. So I want to thank our communications officer, who is just working day and night to keep the community educated about it, and I asking folks for our neighbors who are not on social media, we have to communicate with them and make sure that they're engaging in getting registered, getting vaccinated, and still wearing their masks, and helping folks make the decision. So thank you for just allowing me to emphasize that.
Thank you, Council Member Hairston. Are there any other comments from members of council? Okay, I think with that, we've come to the end of the meeting. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And second, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Motion carries. And have a good night, everyone. Stay safe.
Welcome, Lisa. Thanks for your first meeting. Oh, thank you so much, everybody.
You're welcome, Lisa. It was great.
Nicely done, Lisa.
Thank you. Bye, guys.
Bye.
Bye-bye.